Part because we have students who are quarantined because they were a close contact with a person who tested positive. We also have students who are isolated because they have tested positive. So if you could give us an update on where we are and then then what I'd like to do is talk about the the challenges and the struggles that we currently face and potential solutions. And then again, just make sure we're all still on the same page.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Dr. Graham. Okay, what I'm going to do is I have a couple of different areas to discuss. First is staff isolation. We have three buildings, Frank Hacento, Hawthorne, and Success, that have no staff isolation and have no student isolation or quarantine. So there's been absolutely nothing to show in there. Currently, when we talk about staff isolation, isolation is an individual that has tested positive for COVID. We have in Helen Steiner, we have one, Larkmore, we have two, Tony Morrison, one, Longfellow, one, High School, one, and Admin, one. Quarantine, that is an individual that has been exposed to somebody with COVID. We have Larkmore, one, and Southview, one. Now, talking student isolation, again, going back to what I mentioned earlier, Hacento, Hawthorne, and Success, there are no students that have tested positive or are quarantined. Right now, Admiral King, we have students isolated that have tested positive, one, Garfield, four, Helen Steiner, four, Larkmore, one, Dehannes, two, GJW, one, Southview, two, High School, six. That's a total of 21. Quarantined students, Admiral King, two, Garfield, 14, Helen Steiner Rice, 13, Palm, three, Dehannes, one, Washington, three, GJW, three, Southview, three, High School, five, with a total of 47. What I'd like to do, when you hear these numbers, it is alarming. With that being said, I want to kind of go into to specific detail here. What we all, what we do is we track where, if a child is exposed, where the exposure took place. 29 of 47 of our students were quarantined due to outside exposure, meaning that that took place outside the building. We had 14 of 47.
I think they're asking us to speak up a little more into the microphone. I know those are feeling us.
14 of 47 quarantined due to cafeteria.
Hold on one second.
Give me one second.
I know there's some chats over there.
Yeah, what it's saying right now is there's no audio on Zoom or YouTube.
You know I had osmosis, did you?
You know it. You do this for a living.
Always know those flags. Check one, two. Can you guys hear us now? Let's assume so. Yeah, we got a yes. Thank you.
Yes on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll go back to, we were talking about the quarantine.
Excuse me if I could jump in real quick. I apologize. Yes on Zoom, no on YouTube.
Why is it getting that together? One quick question.
Yes.
The numbers you just gave us, were those students only, or they're student and teachers? Are you getting to the next one?
Student and staff.
You're getting there. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And there's no need to repeat all the stuff that you've read, but if you could summarize those total numbers at the end, please. Thank you.
I know you.
Is that better on YouTube?
What's that?
I was just saying something because when we're all silent, they can't hear.
I know. I know it's hard for you. I know it's hard for you to be still over there.
So you can't hear on YouTube?
Anytime there's a sound glitch.
Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Very good.
To summarize what I was saying, staff isolation totals thus far, seven. Staff quarantine thus far, two. Student isolation thus far, 21. Student quarantine thus far, 47, with a grand total of 77 student and adults impacted with COVID through our contact tracing process. Currently, we have 29, and I want to break this down a little bit. 29 of the 47 quarantined were due to outside exposure. 14 of 47 were quarantined due to cafeteria. To give you to break down the 29 of 47, that's 62% of the cases. 14 of 47 due to cafeteria, 30%, three of 47 quarantined due to classroom, or 6%. One of 47 was a sports program, but it was managed with an outside entity and not through the district. As mentioned earlier, quarantine is 14 days. Students and adults after five can get a test, a PCR test, and come back after seven with a negative test. If they do not go and get tested, it's a 14-day quarantine.
Okay, so just to summarize in terms of risk, two different types of risk here. One is obviously the the health risks. And again, I am not an expert in any of this, but this is the information that's shared with me by experts. The likelihood of a child being having extreme consequences as a result of getting COVID is very, very, very low. But obviously, the risk is they take it home to give it to people who are more susceptible or higher risk, which puts them at in obviously the potential awful outcomes of COVID. The other issue that we're struggling with is academic. So the risk is academic. So everybody that Jeff read is going to miss a week or two of school because depending on how long they're quarantined or isolated. So to increase the the amount of students who miss school is is a risk that we face. Now, as Jeff mentioned, we've identified our cafeteria as one of the places that is the the least controllable. And the reason is that you're not a close contact if you've been vaccinated, or if you're wearing a mask, or if you're three feet apart. Well, currently in our cafeterias, not all of them, but currently in some of our cafeterias, you cannot be three feet apart. And obviously, you can't eat with a mask on. So the challenge is being three feet apart with a mask. If you're vaccinated, it's not an issue. We believe we have a solution to that problem that we'll get worked out here in the next day or so. But I think the question that comes up again, and so we'll make sure that we're on the same page, and it bears asking again, based on the all the variants that are out there and the level of spread, and obviously, we're going in the wrong direction in terms of not just quarantines, but people contracting the virus. So right now, we are 11 and under. Masks are required. Currently, 12 and over, we highly encourage if you've not been vaccinated. Now, we could require if you haven't been vaccinated. But the reality is, we can't tell who is and who isn't necessarily with a glance. So to please, that is a challenge, unrealistic.
So is this where we?
Please. Yeah, I just want to share the information and and now I want to shut up and listen if that's okay.
Yeah, and I think based on our previous conversations, we had an expectation that we wouldn't always be where we started. And I've talked to some board members. We've, you know, we try and keep up with each other. Based on a whole lot of things, it seems like we should be thinking about just going to mask. I look at colleges are doing it. Most city municipalities are doing it. Government buildings are doing it. And it means keeping kids from being quarantined, which is our biggest piece, is we've always wanted to keep kids in school in the safest environment possible. And that seems to be almost a no-brainer. The most effective way of keeping kids in school and not exposed is everybody wearing a mask.
And I do agree with that. But when we look at these numbers, other than the cafeteria, the, I mean, and there were three in the classroom, the biggest came from outside of school. So masks are going to do nothing. We can't do anything about the masks in the cafeteria. So 92% of the cases, if we had everyone wear masks, those 92 cases still would have happened.
But they would have bought it here, but they'd have had a mask on, and the person next to them would have had a mask on. So they can get it someplace else, whether they're wearing a mask or not. But when they come here, the likelihood of them transmitting it is reduced because they're wearing a mask. I mean, I think that's a key point. The fact is, is they're getting it other places, and then they're going to bring it back here. So if they're wearing masks, regardless of whether your behavior outside of the building is less healthy, the likelihood of you having significant impact here because of that risky behavior is reduced. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. I mean, I understand that completely. But I'm just saying what you had just said.
Yeah.
Right now, if we had everyone wearing masks, these numbers probably would not have been different. If we started the school year off, only three of them came from the classroom, so 6%. That's, that's just what I was saying to that comment, is only three of the cases, if we had everyone wear masks from day one, we would have only present, prevented three.
Three quarantines.
Right.
Yes.
So I guess my next question would be is, are we going to offer any kind of virtual learning for a parent that they do not want their kid?
We currently do have, we currently do have an opportunity for online learning, but it's a long-term commitment. It's not like we did last year, where students come in and go out. We have an agreement with an agency. They'll still be considered our student, but it's all online, and they get support from the, it's actually in partnership with our Educational Service Center, but at the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio. So it's a minimum of nine weeks, but they highly encourage a semester.
And that's been put out to the parent?
We have, we have, we have students there now.
We have. I mean, but has every, have we put that out, though, as a, I just feel like if we put masks, we may get more parents who are like, I don't want my.
And that's a concern we have. Our kids just choosing not to. And right now.
To not to, right.
Yep. And right now, we have a lot of our students, I won't say most, because I don't have the data to support that, but a lot of our students are wearing masks.
A hundred percent. My girls have said at General Johnny, surprisingly, they came home and said, Mom, everyone had masks on. At the high school, they have said everyone, a lot of teachers and kids have had masks on. So I mean, we are really, I'm actually, compared to what I've heard at other schools, I'm very proud of our kids and our staff and because they're kind of taking initiative on their own. But again, we're not telling them, you have to wear a mask. We're kind of letting them make that. And so sometimes I think that also had, makes a big, how some people react to things.
Trusting people to make the right decision.
Right. If you're mandated to wear, do something, sometimes. Sometimes we have to look at that also. And then as Jeff and I, as we talk, what will be if we do mandate masks, which I'm not saying I'm against, there's just a lot of questions. If a kid refuses to wear a mask, what are we going to do? And I think before we mandate that, we have to have that wrote out, too. So if a kid man refuses to wear a mask, what happens to them? Is he sent home for the day? Or what? I mean, we just have to have that, which we talked about that earlier, that we would have to, you know.
If it's a board policy that you have to wear a mask, then a student has to wear a mask. And if that that child or the, or that child's parents refuse for that child to wear a mask, and again, health issues aside, because there are exceptions to that, but then that child couldn't come to school here. So if that's a board policy, then we will follow it. Now, we can get that child in to the online schooling, but it's a two-week process, intake process. And during that time, we could provide two weeks of education, but it's a very choppy education, coming right off a very choppy time. So that would be, it would add challenges to that student.
Thank you.
So did you have anything, Bill, before?
Yeah, I'm.
Processing it on.
I'm the only person that has time to sit around and watch television half the day, you know. And I'm really surprised, I'm really surprised at the numbers. You know, I'm, they're, they're way better than what I expected, you know, because I know that, I know in the South, I know that they're, they're mandating masks for schools, and they also, they also have some policies where they can, the parents can opt out. Okay, so it's like a mandate, but the parent can override it. You know, they don't want to override it, right, the parent. But I'm surprised that we're, where we're at. I just think it's such an easy fix for everybody to do the right thing. I don't know that we're there yet, you know. I thought, I thought our numbers would be a lot worse. You know, maybe, maybe we skate through this, but I just, I just think it's a matter of when, not if, you know, that something's going to happen, that something that's going to happen. And when it, and when it does, then I will support mandating masks. You know, not at this time, it's not recommended, but when it, when it comes, I will, when it's time.
So I would add to that, Bill. So we've only been in school less than a week. So if it's festering, it's happening now. And when you look at what's happening in Florida and Alabama, Mississippi, all this pandemic, we've usually trailed by them by two and a half to three weeks. So I mean, I think it's somewhat of our position to know what's coming and to try to prevent the train from getting off the track. I'll go to what Courtney said about online kind of a learning. With all the work that we did last year, the last year and a half, how difficult would it be for those kids who are quarantined if the teachers just let the cameras roll like they did during Zoom time, so they wouldn't have to miss class time even though they were quarantined at home?
There are a number of options for students who are quarantined or isolated that we're working with our, our teachers on now. So there's a, there's a series of things we're looking at.
But is, but is it possible?
Yes, it's possible.
Okay.
Yep.
Last year, we were caught, we were caught by surprise. Okay, now, now it wouldn't surprise anybody for this to happen. I mean, we could do this even like, I talked with Mark, like a snow day, see, wherever, snow day tomorrow, see you, see you Zoom at nine o'clock, you know. You're really not getting a snow day, you're just getting a different place for education for, for one day. But it seems like we've, we've got the internets in place, we've got the computers in place, that, that we should be able to, in, in a moment's notice, at least for a period of time, just go, go back to that. You know, is it not that easy? Or am I?
In some ways, it is, but you'll find out from Drew here in a second, that there are some, some things that aren't ideal right now. Drew's going to give an update on technology and exactly where we are with all of our devices.
I have a question.
And we're not, we're not quite there yet. Could we figure it out? Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Courtney.
Sorry. Do the new computers have cameras on them? Are they there? So they can zoom from them? Okay.
So I'll just add to the point I made to you, Bill. I know, we know it's coming. We know it's coming. I mean, just reading your context clues, it's going to happen here as well. So I think we don't wait until that happens to come up with our contingency plan. And it'll be two weeks before we meet again. And the place can go in a lot of different places over those next two weeks. I just don't know how do we position ourselves to be contingent on expecting the worst, because hospital beds are filling up. And over the last week, I know at least 10 people who are totally vaccinated, who've contracted this thing again. So we've got to get prepared in a hurry and not just wait for it to, to smack us then decide, what are we going to do now?
In one piece, too, when Jeff is reading off the numbers and talking about per building and, and I guess a number that was, numbers that were important to me, and I want to say on, I think, three days ago, it was seven students, then it went to 28 students, and now we're, I'm sorry, seven people, students, staff and students. Then I went to 28 the next day, and now it's 77. So the numbers are growing exponentially, as you would expect, because again, if I've got it, that first seven is still at home, and that next 28 is going to be at home. So I'll, you know, all of those people are going to be home for the next couple of weeks, and that number continues to build.
Yeah, I would suggest we have enough trend data to give us a reasonable idea of where it's going. And we have enough mitigation to give us a reasonable idea on how to reduce it. So we can, and it's, and it's still going to grow. We're just trying to have it grow less. So if we have the capacity to have it grow less, and the real dynamic negative outcome is it's inconvenient or a little bit uncomfortable, I think, and it's not, I guess it's, it's easier in that everyone's being uncomfortable all over the place. So right now, all of our elementary students and teachers are being uncomfortable.
Teachers aren't wearing masks. Right now, I'm saying right now, they're not.
And again, the other plus for us is with 90% plus of our staff vaccinated, that helps. But again, if we, you know, yeah, for me, it's, it's clear where the trend's going.
And I think it comes down to the one or two philosophies, and I could support on both. One is, do we mandate? Or two, do we just assume that people are going to trust and trust our folks to make the right decisions? And right now, they are. But to Mark's point, next week, they may not, and things may get worse. So I guess the question is, what's the, the best way to proceed and to make sure people are safe? And again, I think the biggest concern that I have anyway is cafeteria, you know, is make sure kids can eat lunch and breakfast at a place that's safe. And I think we have a solution to that. So I'm not ready to share yet, because I don't want to get people all nervous. But, but I think we've got a backup plan. That, that makes perfect sense.
So I guess I'm just looking for a next move, because, you know, I would, I'd hate to put Jeff on the spot or Jeff on the spot and say, if you guys were sitting in this chair.
I have no problem making a recommendation, but yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that I'm not overstepping.
So you guys deal with this 24 hours a day. Every day, you're punching the clock to get here. And I don't know who wants to feel that first, but if you guys are in our position, knowing what you know, knowing the trend data, knowing what's happening in other districts, knowing what the health experts are saying to you, and what we see, how would you?
And I'm going to give you a longer answer than you probably want. If you, if you listen, if you listen to the number, the schools where a lot of our cases are, they're in cases, I mean, there are buildings where kids wear masks. We know that one of the big issues to Jeff's point is cafeteria. I think we have a solution for that. That said, what's the downside, you know, to wearing a mask? I mean, so the data does show that it's not a mask issue outside of the cafeteria. But again, to Tim's point, how difficult is it to wear a mask for a while?
And the other thing, so just a question back on, on how we're determining who's quarantined. So like, we would see, there was one positive case, and that impacted on, I think, when there were two kids who were quarantined.
Correct.
Because we, by some determination, that people were always wearing masks, or they weren't around them for a certain amount of time. So I guess what I'm getting at is, in our contact tracing, there's a margin of error. And, and there's, and based on sometimes an absence of information, because who's following who, who knows who has it on all the time. And so I think the only true measure that we have is the person who tested positive being positive, and the people who we know were in proximity without a mask. So even with our best scenario, what we know, we could also reasonably assume that there's probably, in that margin of error, something we don't know. So I think there's, I think there's always a percentage greater than what we have.
You're, you're a close contact for 14 minutes, so you're fine, but 16 minutes, and nope, you got it. Yeah, there's.
And I also think, to your point, we, earlier, it was mentioned about, right now, we don't know if the virus was shared to the next person. We're only in so many, we're only in seven days in. So as you look at the incubation period of the virus, so right now, we don't, we, what we know is who's positive and close proximity. And when we talk about the cafeteria, we use the cafeteria as a contact tracer, is we meet every single morning, and we discuss every single case. And we want to make sure, you know, that questioning of error, wanting to make sure who is next to who. But we also extend out that one step further, is if I'm positive, those two individuals would be quarantined. But we also want to know who was sitting next to that person in the event that down the road, that in person carries the virus, and then we would take it to that next step. And that's why we track in different locations. We wanted to know specifically where individuals are to help support the data. So down the road, we will have more information to, was it transferred in? But right now, because of the number of days into this, we still don't have that.
And where is the, in our thought process, is the dynamic of asymptomatic folks, we don't know?
And that's, that's the difficulty. When we were doing testing here last year, we clearly knew based on a result. Right now, we are trusting that individuals that are exhibiting symptoms, we are trusting that they stay home. That has been our recommendation from the very beginning. But it's difficult to say if somebody's carrying the virus and they do not know they were exposed. It's virtually impossible for us to know unless, and everything we learn is what's shared with us through staff and/or student and/or parent. That's how we're getting our information now.
Are we testing sports still?
No.
Oh. So I mean, really, we could go there. I mean, the football players are playing together, they can't have masks on. So I mean, I guess, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
So if one person's positive, almost all those kids are.
Right. Then not only he's positive, because we're not testing those kids, and they can't have a mask on while they're playing.
That's correct.
But when they come back to school, they have their mask on, they're not spreading it.
Oh, but, but what his thing was, they're still taking it home to their parent at home. And so we're letting the sports players play without masks, which I know they can't. But that's just another, another thing. If we're not, if we're going to make everyone in more masks, then we probably should go back to testing all the sports players in case they're transmitting it. Because, yeah, they're, we're going to keep our kids safe at home, I mean, keep our kids safe in the classroom, but not when they go home. And that's really clearly what we're doing, because like he said, or like Jeff said, the big, the big numbers are in the elementary schools right now, where they're wearing masks all day. Do you know what I'm saying? So that's the only thing that I am having a hard time with this. The big numbers are in where they're wearing masks.
And what's driving me more is just the reality of what we see all around us. And I think we are in a different situation in terms of even our confidence last year. Our confidence was based on a series of things. One of them was our testing protocol. We have now eliminated the testing protocol. And what's different about this delta piece is the rate of infection among children. So we have a variant that is more infectious for kids, and we're not testing. So we've removed that kind of, whether it was false security or what, that's taken away, and that exacerbates this anxiety even more, because we're actually more vulnerable than we were last year, because there's a higher spread. And one of the other things that we use to give us a red flag is missing. Increased spread, reduced mitigation. Yeah, I, and I guess I'm just, I just don't want to find out. I'd rather have to deal with, we, maybe we shouldn't have done it than I wish we had have.
You're saying with masks or with testing?
With masks. Well, testing with all of it. I mean, again, I think if, I think if we determine, we didn't make decisions solely based on what everyone else was doing last year, anyway. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been testing anyone. So I think, you know, we've got more things in place now. There seems to be better science around it, not just dealing with not getting it, but what happens when you do get it. So I think all of those pieces in place, we have 90% of our staff vaccinated, lots of our kids have. So there's a lot of pieces that just put us in a better place. But it's still, yeah, I, I'm, I'm one that.
But as you talked about, as you talked about last year.
Would you say it would be more, it would be more prudent just to list two masks for eight weeks, see what the numbers are, and thus revisit it November, first meeting in November? And we'd be there, you know, they can say, say what you want to say then, but at least you err on the side of caution.
And we'd also agreed, I know we went from six feet down to three feet, but is the three feet really happening? Because we're not even doing it in our own, in our own meetings.
We don't have masks or anything here.
Yeah, so let's start with us. But, you know, so you, so you said we can't do it in the cafeteria. So on some of our schools, we can't do it in the cafeteria.
We will be, we will be able to do it. I'm confident, we have a plan that I don't have all the details worked out, too. But I am confident we'll have a plan where we keep three feet apart.
And I'm not certain who's policing the three feet rule in the schools, but are they, are we really living to that? Because I get texts about, you know, desk clustered and touching and all those things.
And if teachers are in a classroom, and all the kids have masks on, and a teacher is teaching, and they're vaccinated, I mean, I mean, I'm okay with a teacher taking their mask off to lecture, okay? I'm, I'm, because they're distancing, because they- I'm, I'm, because they're distancing, because they, they will have that three, that six feet between them and a child. Okay, so I mean, that, those are the type of thing, I mean, if they're, if they're, if they're comfortable with it, I mean, I would be okay with that. But as long as everybody else is trying to protect themselves, you know, because I mean, it is probably as hard to lecture with a mask on. It's muffled. Some kids have hearing problems, some adults have hearing problems. Okay, but I mean, me thinking something like that is, is like when we was talking about levels of protection. Okay, he says, I have fifty percent if this person have a mask, I have another fifty percent if this person has a mask, you know? But if, if we have the distance and the mask, then we're, we're also good. So I mean, that's what I was thinking about the teaching aspect.
I think I was too, probably going with him too also, thinking of a high school teacher standing up in front of the class lecturing for forty minutes. I think that may be a positive thing, where they can take their mask off. And if they're standing up at the board, or they're standing, sitting at their computer, or whatnot, maybe that would be, I don't know.
So, and I don't, I don't wanna overshoot. I don't wanna overshoot the point, so did we change the three feet rule, three?
At first, the research showed six feet, and then as they did more and more research, the research is actually, there's no difference between six and three. So three feet is fine. And what the, the, what our testing showed was that if you followed the mitigation strategies, and actually, Prakash Ganesh wrote an article about what we did, I think I've shared the rough draft with you a while back. But what, the essence of it was, the, what us testing accomplished was to demonstrate that we don't need to test if we're following mitigation strategies, because they do work. And that's the three feet, and one of the two of us wearing a mask. Or, I'm sorry, three feet, or you wearing a mask, or me wearing a mask, and we're, the likelihood of that spread is very unlikely.
And this is not at the expense of us as a team here, but we need, the community needs to understand how we were, how we arrived at the points that we arrived at. So at what point did we change our, our mind on the three feet of separation in the classroom? Or was there never a three feet go?
No, the three feet would have been this year. We stuck with six feet because that's how we're designed for the hybrid model last year. I don't think we went to three feet last year, did we?
I'm talking about right now, though. Aren't we supposed to be three feet apart in our classrooms?
Three feet apart, or wearing a mask, or vaccinated. Yeah, so again, that's, that's the, the other piece there.
Or, okay, I'm clear, thank you.
So then for us, I think we've come to a place where we're always comfortable. If we were to make a motion for eight weeks of the remainder of the semester to go with masks and then revisit, is that kind of where we?
So where I am.
Yeah, the semester, so January?
Yeah, and not that it's a magic number, but it's just a, a point in which we can then reassess.
Or if I could just throw this out there, or we could reassess at every board meeting, let you know exactly where we are, and whether or not what we're doing is working. If not, what are some other mitigation strategies we should consider? But, but if you wanna put a distant date out, I'm fine with that too.
Yeah, I like that, I like that better.
So have we lost the relationship or the communication that we had with Mercy Hospital, University, and, not University, but Case and our Health Department where we're not?
We, we met with them once a week, we follow the recommendations, we are currently following their recommendations. So we don't have that group meeting, but, and we have, I think we meet with Mercy tomorrow. But we've had conversations with Prakash.
Hey guys.
And Dave.
Tim, come back. I don't want you guys to miss this.
That's right, we still have had regular conversations with Dave Koval and Prakash. And more, we get just quick conversations with Prakash, but we meet with Dave most Fridays.
Yeah, and I, I just, the idea of of having some level of, of constant. Yeah, I think, you know, I think that, that eight-week range means that there's a behavior that we can implement, and then but coming back every week, we don't even meet every week.
No, I'm sorry, I said every board meeting, every board meeting, just give an update on where we are. But I'm fine with whatever you wanna do, I don't have a strong opinion on the date piece.
I just know that last year when we were having this conversation, it was attacking older people and adults. And now, the bigger problem around the nation is what's happening with our, our children. So I think we have to look at it with a fresh pair of eyes. And what, what happened, what worked then, because we were just worried about the instructors and the faculty, has now swiftly changed to our students and the faculty. So what are you saying in school, my friend?
Well, I have two questions. One, are we, I'm confused, are we supposed to be three feet? Because at the high school, we're not three feet apart. I mean, and, and I'm not condemning anything.
Nope, masked, vaccinated, or three feet apart, one of those three things needs to be in place.
Somebody, nobody's policing that.
And the three feet shouldn't be more than fifteen minutes.
I mean, I'm vaccinated, and we had the conversation in my class today, and some were vaccinated, some were not, some were masked, some were not. And, you know, I, like Bill said, I'm up at the, I call it the stage there, talking to my kids when I do my lecture. And I'm at a safe distance, I'm not licking doorknobs and getting in there, as I say, in their grill. But they're not, the kids themselves aren't sitting three feet apart. In my, in, in most classrooms, they're not.
Right.
In some classes, there's thirty-five kids in a classroom that are, I know the teacher across all had to get more dust just to fit everybody into her classroom this week, and it's, and it's a tight fit. I'm lucky, I have like twenty-four, and I tried to strategically spread them out as best I could, but, you know.
That becomes a tough part on the honor system.
Yeah, and I don't know how you.
In honor system and in dishonorable society, it's like, not so moron.
To Bill's point, though, I do.
But we trust people.
Yeah, and as, as an educator, I do like what Bill said because the kids and I were talking today about if I had to wear a mask, how different would that be when I'm talking and teaching? And they said it would be more difficult just to kind of, because some of them, obviously, they read my lips as my voice is coming out and just the inflections. So I think if a teacher's vaccinated, I would, at an opportunity to have the choice to, if I'm up there at the.
Especially since we're at ninety-three percent, I think, I think that was a, it's a very good number that, you know, that, I mean, I think that's great for us.
Yeah, oh yeah, that, that's an impressive number. When I've shared that number with other people in other fields, like, wow, that's an impressive number.
Gives the teachers a little bit of freedom. I mean, if you're uncomfortable with that, then put a mask on.
Absolutely.
You know, but if not, then.
I like that, I really like that, I think that was one of my main things.
Then you can take it off. So I, I still, I still say that we revisit it, we revisit it, we'll put it on for eight weeks. But if the numbers change, okay, there's nothing saying that we can't take it off.
Yeah.
Okay, we can change it anytime that we want. But I, I just threw that eight weeks out there is arbitrarily, you know, I mean, that we wanna, we wanna see where this thing is going. We want, we, we wanna get ahead of it in enough time, okay, so that we are ahead of it. Okay, and then we can also, we can always back it off if, if the numbers are good.
So as we go back to Courtney's point, though, so what happened with our athletics? And do we have the ability of testing more? Or do we just kinda look at that group of kids in a different, in a different light? Because you can't play football and wear a mask.
Yep.
So I don't know if we can increase testing on them, or, or once we have a episode out at the fieldhouse or in the gym, we deal with it at that point in time.
I think by putting this mask on, we're helping them.
We are, but if they're on the field, or they're on the court, or they're playing volleyball, they're not gonna have those masks. So yes, it is helping the overall for the greater good. But when we make our vote, or we put this in place, we've gotta make sure that any exceptions that need to be made, that that's, that's understood, that somebody's saying, oh, look, they're not wearing a football mask, you know?
It also brings us to this question that we had before is by law, we can't, we're not forbid from asking certain questions, but we seem to have chosen not to ask those questions. So I'd asked the question before. Can we inquire and know, based on an honor system of disclosure, who's been vaccinated and who hasn't been?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, but I guess we can, but have we? And do we need to make that also part of the decision-making thing where we determine that we are going? So for example, we know that ninety percent roughly of our teachers are vaccinated.
All staff, yeah.
Of staff, sorry, staff. But we could also get more specific and ask the question, now, if they choose not to tell us or whatever, we know. But we could actually know in our classrooms who's vaccinated and who's not. That's good information to have. I think to the point of who's, who's wearing masks and who's not is teachers. So if we say to our teachers, if you've been vaccinated, you don't need to wear a mask when you're teaching. Because I think we would also say to our teachers, if you haven't been vaccinated, you should wear a mask. But that's like an objective number that we can probably ninety, be ninety-five percent certain of who has been. And so it seems like something that we should ask, because that would.
So how would behavior change, or what would we do differently knowing which thirty percent of our kids, or whatever the number is, is vaccinated? I'm just not sure where you were going with it.
Yeah, so as far as teachers, that's gonna say that, okay, here's, I've, I've been vaccinated, and, or I have not been vaccinated. So it's an easy piece of who's wearing a mask when I'm teaching and who isn't. As far as students, I think it'd be reasonable for us to know if we have ninety percent of our students vaccinated, then our honor system around who's wearing a mask and who's not wearing a mask is a whole lot different.
Gotcha.
If we have a scenario where we got thirty percent of our students who've been vaccinated, and we're looking around, and they're not wearing masks, well then, we're.
And we have a pretty good idea of numbers of students who are vaccinated, because most of them would have been vaccinated here. So some kids could have been vaccinated elsewhere. Do you, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but do you happen to know off the top of your head how many of our kids have been vaccinated? So I guess I did put you on the spot.
You did.
Just to be clear.
So we don't have an exact number because, again, going back to Dr. Graham's point. We know because we ran vaccination clinics. And so we had students sign in, so we were specifically understanding who, which part of our population. But we had students all the time, when we go through our COVID process, one question we ask is, are you vaccinated to the parent? And then the parent gives a disclosure, well, my child is, so that allows the child to come back with. But exact numbers, I know, I would say, if I had a rough estimate, I would say a hundred plus would be my guess. If we started to incorporate vaccinations from other places. And I also, the conversations I'm hearing right now from parents, our parents are now pushing towards getting children vaccinated because they're, they're seeing our numbers go up, and they wanna get ahead of that curve.
So Steve is saying that, like in your classroom, you've seen people who were not wearing masks and closer than three feet, but you don't know.
No.
They're vaccinated. So right there, that information would alert him, like, wow, so I, you know, that's all.
Some of the kids have said too, that they've admitted, like, they are vaccinated, some of them say, I'll wear a mask too, just to be extra safe. And, you know, it just depends on, every kid comes in with a different story, parental, parental guidance as far as what they want. And like, I have not had one issue whatsoever, one way or the other, with the masks or, you know, social distancing. In terms of like, you know, hey, even today, one girl was like, you know what, I'm gonna have you sit over here just to give a little space between a group of kids so that she could be a little more isolated, and she was, okay, that's cool.
And though it's difficult to measure, I think with precaution, everyone, there was a consensus almost that, based on our protocols for testing, and how conscientious we were about it, that it almost shaped behavior. And that people were wearing masks more, they were being, they were doing the social distancing more because of our focus on that. And they were compared to other places, that it was almost like our folks were behaving with a little bit more, they were a bit more conscientious than maybe if we weren't doing that testing. And we didn't have that rigor. It was, you know, when you start talking about testing or vaccination, people tend to, I think, behave differently. I mean, we had, I don't know. I don't know how much of this mathematics, mathematics work or what, but.
According to Dave Koval, this was, this information's two weeks old, thirty percent of children in Lorraine County, students in Lorraine County have been vaccinated. Now, what's the percentage here compared to others? I don't know, but the number's not in that ninety percent range, at least it wasn't.
Are we still able to get another, are we still working on getting another vaccination clinic here?
Yes, and I've met with Dave last week, I was in a meeting with him. And right now, the push for us is to get out, and this is something I wanna talk to Ross May about, is we would like to set up a vaccination clinic for our kids. And there is a commitment from the Health Department, they would come here if we had the numbers to support a vaccination clinic. So that's in the works.
So what's our next steps to, to kind of push that along?
Getting out to the parents, getting the messaging out to the parents. We'd like to establish a vaccination clinic, see what the interest is. If we get interest at a level that would support getting the Health Department to come here.
Is there a timeline that we're trying to get that information out, or a process that we're gonna do that?
Based on what we're observing here, the goal is to get it out ASAP, I would say next week.
What was that, that baseline number they were talking about?
My, our numbers, well, as we continue to watch our numbers go up, the goal is, with, with the numbers going up with quarantine and isolation, there is becoming, and I've been speaking with parents, parents have been calling me every day about this, we now need to know where are vaccinations. So we have been sending them out to the Health Department. But the goal would be if we can put one in-house, that would be ideal, that's an ideal.
I thought you said that Dave Koval suggested if we had enough. When is enough?
Enough for us, you know, like, when, last time we did a clinic, we had seventy plus. And so if we knew specifically how many of our kids, because we would have to have them bring Pfizer.
Right. So basically, we need to be able to just simply tell them how many we want, we have to pre-sign them up or register them or something?
Yes, they would do a consent form, because the consent form would be online, they would fill out the consent form, have the parent's signature, so the parent does not have to be here at the time of vaccination.
But we could also have one done at the Mercy Clinic.
At the Mercy Clinic, correct.
Any, any day.
Yep. As well as different vendors, different organizations around the area, and again, the Health Department.
So then, so our parents are aware that anytime they can come to our Mercy Clinic and get vaccinated?
We, we shared it, but yeah, but obviously, we need to keep pushing that information out, yep.
Great, thank you.
And now that, I guess Pfizer has gone and been approved by the FDA, does that change our approach with our faculty or staff? Are it still gonna be, because I know some colleges and people are mandating that there's, their faculty and staff, and even students are forced to have the vaccine. I'm not sure how that would play on students, but I do understand that it gives us a different leverage point when it comes to our adults, even though our numbers are great. Even though our numbers are great, I'm just curious now that, does anything change for us after being, after Pfizer being approved?
I, I will learn what it can change, and then we can decide what should change.
Okay, that's fair. We beat that horse pretty good. Sorry about that.
But did we make a decision?
Yeah.
Did you make a decision?
I think at, at the next, to some level, I think Bill was, was lobbing out some recommendations about an eight-week or to the end of the semester, or. So at this point, I'm looking for a motion.
I'm okay with the eight-week, but if they're bringing information in, then we'll revisit at that point. And if the numbers are to our liking, then we, we can take it off, depending on the trend.
Are you making that in form of a motion, sir?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Is there any support?
So we need to clarify that, though.
Yeah.
So, so we are in favor of eight weeks.
Eight weeks of masking.
And you will provide us with updates at each meeting, but we don't have to make a decision at each meeting. I think we wanna get the updates, and it could inform us or not inform us. So eight weeks and then meeting updates.
Yeah.
Or would it be simply just say we're making the mandate until further notice? So if it's two weeks, if it's, if it's two months, does it really matter?
Well, I think eight weeks, and then they give us an update, and we say thank you for the update, and we just keep it moving if we don't change it. But I think at, then at the eight-week mark, we will then make a decision again, affirm or change.
And I also heard earlier, with an exception of vaccinated adults, is that a part of this or not? Or is this everybody, or?
I don't think Bill said that, I think he meant at least while they were teaching, or if they're up at dinner.
Everybody wears a mask unless, unless you're like lecturing, and if you feel comfortable taking it off, then let the teacher make that decision.
Because I don't think we.
That's the only person I can see taking a mask off during the school process, unless you're eating, of course.
So I'm still waiting on a verified motion?
I think I got it.
So based on that, I.
Okay, I'm making a motion that we wear a mask for eight weeks, and we will revisit at that point and make a determination if we hold it or if we leave it the way it is.
With the exception of the lecturer?
When teachers, when adults, when people are instructing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there support?
Support. And vaccinated people, no.
Any further discussion?
Poor horse.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
And Ms. Nazario.
Thank you, I appreciate your patience on that one, and your care for the people who are in charge of making sure they're safe. Drew, can you do a brief update on technology? Then I'm gonna go through the pieces to vote. What's on the agenda is some. What's on the agenda is some computer things and some other stuff going out. And the question was asked at a board meeting or two ago about where we, where we are exactly with student computers and staff computers. And I know that was one of the questions, how quickly can we flip that switch to go back to remote? But Drew, if you would, please just briefly.
Absolutely. So a couple of the major initiatives we've had over the summer and even up till now, everything's been based around simplicity and resiliency. We purchased enough Chromebooks for all of the students from grades two through 12 and pre-K, kindergarten and first grade will still be using iPads. All of the Chromebooks except maybe 300 have been received in the district and distributed. We're waiting on the last 300. We're at the mercy of the vendor. Every school district across the country is facing the same struggles we, as we are with vendors delivering and a lot of other people are with many other things. So far, the rollout's gone well. I haven't heard, I haven't heard negativity towards it.
No.
We've provided protective snap-on cases for the devices themselves as well as Aretha and Bill Oly's team and many others have provided backpacks to all the students throughout the district for carrying their, there's a protective area for the devices to be carried for those that are going home. Many of the devices are staying in the district. We're in the process of getting carts together for charging right now. That's been a pretty, pretty big initiative despite being at about 60% of our team throughout the summer and now because of illnesses and, and other things that have affected us. Another one of the big initiatives is adding a projector very similar to what you see here on the whiteboard at Palm and King. Again, we're at the mercy of the vendors there. We ordered them back in April and right now they're sitting on a train in Chicago. They're inaccessible to us and to the vendor for delivery. The purpose of that is we're moving away from the traditional smartboard that allows students to touch and use digital markers on. We're moving to a regular whiteboard that you can use dry erase markers on. And the projectors we're installing have that little white box that you see at the top of the whiteboard. That, that's a little sensor array that allows a regular whiteboard to act like a smartboard. Students can go up and touch the, the whiteboard and the, whatever computer is connected to it reacts like a mouse or a keyboard would. The purpose of that is, smartboards are very, very expensive to repair and replace and they're very easy to damage. This is a traditional whiteboard that costs, I think around $75. Whatever damage befalls that whiteboard, we can repair it or replace it. And the functionality, the smart functionality of the projector itself isn't affected at all. Those two buildings right now have regular desktop projectors that the, the teachers are using until the wall hanging smartboard or wall hanging projectors are delivered. At that time, we'll, we'll get them installed in just a couple of days. We already have the mounts and everything else. We just need to hang them and bolt them down. It's a pretty quick process. The next part is, and there's an agenda item on the, on the, well, there's an item on the agenda for them rather, is the MacBook purchasers' purchases for teachers and administrators. These are for 16-inch MacBook Pros, devices that are resilient enough to last several years for us. With a refresh cycle after three to five years, Apple has assured us that we'll receive more than half the purchase price if we trade in for new devices when the time comes to refresh. So from, from a financial standpoint, it's, it's a win. Also, these are being purchased using elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, colloquially known as ESR funds. For those unfamiliar, that's a, there's an additional $1.9 billion made available to the state this year in addition to around $25 billion last year for technology, cleaning supplies, everything else that can enhance the, the learning environment during the pandemic. Again, getting back to simplicity, these devices don't require a lot of hands-on imaging. They tie directly in with our Google platform and our Microsoft platform. So we don't need to spend a lot of time updating these devices as we, as we had in the past with all the Windows machines that, that the teachers are using. And those will be on a seven to nine week delivery schedule after a purchase order can be placed.
Thank you.
And given in the hands of teachers in phases, it won't be just handing a device out to all the teachers without any warning or professional development. We have several staff members who are pretty fluent in using Apple technology and we're in the process of putting together some simple videos and workflows that allow teachers that have never used a Mac device before to very effectively use it. Because most of the curriculum that's being developed is what I often refer to as device agnostic. It's in the cloud, it's using websites and apps that run in the cloud. We don't have to worry about purchasing additional apps to make these devices function. And they'll also, the curriculum that's being developed will work very well with the students' devices. With screens large enough that if, if we do need to go back to remote, the teachers can see everybody on their, on their screen at one time. They integrate very effectively with the Google platform. So using Google Classroom, teachers will be able to see all their students, they'll be able to lock all of their students' Chromebooks into one particular application either remotely or in class so that everyone's looking at the same thing and no one's wandering off to, to visit whatever, you know, webpage they'd like to. Does anyone have any questions so far?
Did you say all the Chromebooks will have cases?
Yes, we have cases for all of them, yes.
So they'll give them out like as, because a lot of my girls have computers, but they don't have cases on them yet. So I was, so they're going to, eventually they're all going to have a case.
Right, we're in the process, they, they came on a different delivery schedule than the devices themselves. There are some that are in the boxes immediately behind you that haven't made it to their buildings. But yes, every single one of them has a device or has a case.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
My additional technology question, going back to a question I had, I asked earlier, how far are we from every teacher being able to go online and Zoom when their students are quarantined and can't participate at the school level? Or did we answer that? I don't, I don't know if I got clarity.
It's not a technology question.
Okay.
It's a logistical issue that we're trying to work out.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can vaguely answer parts of that though, if that's okay?
You probably don't want to.
Okay.
But I get your point, but yeah, I think it's another part of the problem that we've got to deal with.
But using Chromebooks is much more suited to a remote environment simply because we don't need to worry about updating operating systems or apps or things like that. As long as they can reach the internet, we can send updates to them.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, more questions? Thanks Drew, appreciate it. All right, I would like the, the board to consider for approval, item 9.01 in Personnel Matters.
Support.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Nazario.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
I abstain, I have a relative on that one.
Like the board to consider for approval, 9.02 to 9.10 Personnel Matters.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Ms. Nazario.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
And Mr. Williams.
Yes. And I'm also going to pull out item 10.01, it's the Athletic Handbook, because I know there are some questions. I don't think we need a presentation, but I do want to give opportunity for, for conversation on that one separate from the rest. I'd like the board to consider for approval, item 10.01.
Support.
So, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Are we going, are we going?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, discussion. Can I, can I jump in real quick?
Sure.
I don't want to lead the discussion, but I do know there's, there are a couple of questions and I'll just let people talk. Bill and I spoke earlier and there were some questions about buying, purchasing tickets and who should be paying for tickets. And I, and I won't let, I won't speak for you, Bill, but I think there were senior citizens, you had some concerns about us charging them and the way that we're only selling tickets electronically.
Yeah, Mr. Corey and I talked about how ticketing and, and purchasing of tickets would go. And, and my, my concern is, is always, hey, that kid maybe doesn't have a computer, maybe doesn't have a smartphone. Well, there aren't a lot out there, but there could be some, there could be some out there. But how they, how they can, how they can purchase, how they can purchase a ticket.
And when we surveyed our community, and again, we still, still paying for, for our students anyway.
Yeah.
Where the 25 to 30% of our students didn't have access to the internet. So that is an issue.
One, one of the things though, we do offer for the half an hour after school, every day that we have a game, students can come down and buy hard copy tickets. So students, students have the opportunity. One of the concerns that a lot of school districts had throughout Northeast Ohio, and I surveyed, we had a lot of conversations because everybody was doing strictly online last year ticketing. Well-received, alleviated a lot of the congestion in lines, getting people through the gate. But one of the major concerns was a lot of the people that sell tickets, collect money, so on and so forth, at gates throughout Northeast Ohio are older. And that alleviated that. So right now, there are, there are some schools that are offering tickets at the gate and not electronically, but they have limited number of individuals selling. And as a result, if you don't buy it online, you have long lines in congestion with people to get into the game. So, but when I did my survey, when we were going through the process, it was close to 70% of the schools that were going strictly online, outside of hard copy season passes, so on and so forth. One of the good things with the majority of our senior citizens, we offer all-year pass to all events for $20 and the vast majority of them do. It's kind of like a credit card that they purchase through the office and they come in and they purchase those. Again, the majority.
So we're saying we don't, right now, we don't, people can't buy tickets at the?
Correct.
I said, that's the way that.
That was a COVID.
That they, yeah. I mean, we, we only had two, as far as I remember, we only had, had it at one end, we had it at the south end and the north and the south end where you could buy a ticket, am I correct? Two years ago.
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay, and now you want to eliminate that completely and just go to all online.
Correct.
Unless they buy it after.
Students, students after school, because again, the students, we had a volleyball game on Tuesday where it was, it was all online. One of the things also, the, the schools that are, that have the online ticketing, they're doing it through hometown ticketing, which is what we're doing also right now, currently did last year. So let's just say hypothetically that you were going to the soccer game, which is on Thursday. You're at Garfield Heights because the Lake Erie League's doing the online ticketing. If you're going to go to their game, you're going to go through that process. So one good thing also is if you, once you do it one time, it's so incredibly easy that you, a lot of the obstacles and barriers are the fear of the idea of doing it for the first time. There were a handful of people, like for example, the volleyball game, that came up and said, you know, I know that there's the online ticketing, I don't know how to do it. Well, we had a handful of people there to show them and help them. And after they do it the first time, now it's just immediately just go to boom, buy the tickets. They don't have to do anything else. And they said themselves, yeah, I would have never guessed that it was that easy. It's literally as fast, if not faster, than physically buying your tickets and receiving your tickets and getting your change.
So I guess if, if most of our folks are doing that. What's the harm in selling tickets traditionally because there's no more super long lines because most of them are doing it?
Well, we could, we can do whatever the board decides to do.
No, my question was, I mean, again, if, if the long line piece, which we've dealt with for, I guess, decades, was the piece, was the issue, by having a whole lot of folks buy them online, that means we no longer have a long line issue.
Yeah, that's, the, the goal is that. That's the goal.
No, what I'm saying is if, so right now, you said most of our folks buy them, purchase, you know, they, they do that online.
Most of our folks are doing it because they have to, yes.
And one of the challenges, one of the things that, that was driving that is the reduction of lines?
Well, no. Part of the issue with the lines is, I'll give you an example. Normally, we'd have as many as four people, four different people selling tickets. The conversations were, I'll tell you right now, the four people that traditionally sell tickets, three of them definitely have already told me they are not doing it. Because they are not physically handling a thousand different people's money over the course of going through a line with COVID and even though they're vaccinated, they said, we're not doing it. Part of it is, is they're older. Now, I'm not saying that we couldn't make a push and find replacements for those individuals.
That's, that was kind of, yes, that's like.
No, no, we could. There are. I don't know if we could, I mean, I would be hopeful that we could. You know, for the most part, the people that have always been willing to do it have been, you know, older folks.
Myself, I, while you're transitioning over, I'd like to see somebody selling a ticket. And when it goes that way, when it starts, if it starts going that way more and more, transition into it. But I don't, I hate to see people get cut out of it because they, they don't have, they don't have a credit card, okay? They don't have a phone, don't know how to, okay? I would, I would say try, try to give that option at least right now with, with the intent that we're going to go.
I, I wouldn't even go with the intent. I think forcing people to do it online creates a barrier based on a lot of pieces. And there are a whole lot of reasons why folks didn't get COVID shots because they had to go through this online process. And there's a group of folks who are intimidated by it and they're not going to learn that. And so I don't know that disallowing them, and I don't know if it's two or if it's 12 or if it's 100. I just, the idea of having folks have to go online to buy a ticket, I think about seniors, I think about lots of folks, I mean, I think about the convenience of it. Yeah, I, you know, I guess, you know, I, one thing when the NFL does it, but us as a public school district, I don't, yeah, that's a.
And that was, and that was, that was the first thing that, and that I didn't like. The second thing is this, we live in a society where, where we, where we honor, we honor age, we honor old people. Like I said, I went to Bedford, I went to Bedford and they says, oh, you have to be over 65, you could go right through. And, and then me and Jim Popeil, we walk right through. My wife's right behind us. Oh no, we, we have to card you. My wife said, my wife said, thank you. And, and I, I, I understand that, but my, my point is this, okay? When you hit the age of 65, which is the social security, 65, 66, okay? It's usually an honorable age and a lot of communities let their people in for free, okay? Whether I'm an opponent or whether I'm theirs, okay? We used to have something where we did it with the, we honored the Golden Buckeye Cards. All of a sudden, everybody had one, okay? And when I told Mr. Corey was this, I says, I really think that we should let people over 65s in for free, but I think they should, eh, have a driver's license or a state ID. And if they have that, if they can produce that, then I think that they should, that they should get in free. Now, whether the rest of the board thinks that, we can discuss that. But that was just, that was just my opinion. You guys aren't that old, are you?
Bill, I'm knocking on the door again.
It's reasonable. I guess I would ask more questions though, just to see what the projection of the loss would be or not and just, I guess I need a little more information before I'm just ready to dive into the deep end. But it's very reasonable. Yeah, it's got to be a revenue impact of some sort.
And that's why, the good thing is, is he did provide that, that $20, you know, and that's for home games, right?
Yes, correct, correct, correct.
And football, we have what, four home games?
Yes, this year, yes.
Okay, so they're really only being charged $5 if you really.
Yeah.
If you do the math.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I just think we need a little more time to get him to gather information.
I can do, I can do whatever the group tells me to do.
Right, and, and for me, it's just, I mean, we, we've not really asked a question to really understand the impact, so I don't know if you're.
Well, I mean, I've never had anybody complain or ask why we don't. I believe it would have been, we did the golden Buckeye card. At the time that we did the golden Buckeye card, initially, the thought process was senior citizens were the ones that received the golden Buckeye. Well, then, don't quote me on this, but they expanded who could receive a golden Buckeye card. It went from just not only senior citizens, but people with disabilities. You could apply for it in other ways. We had people coming up to the gate that were 30 years old that had a golden Buckeye card. Okay, so it created some obstacles at that time, which would have been, this is when it was Admiral King in Southview, okay? So this is, this was how long ago it was. There were then conversations as to my boss at the time, superintendent asked me, find out what other schools are doing, gather the information, bring it back. We did a survey and came to find out that the vast majority of schools did reduce ticket prices. Those reduced ticket prices were whatever they charged students. Then they also did reduced season passes. Part of the reason was to be able to keep counts, to know how many people were coming through the gate for the purpose of, now, we don't have to worry about that as much as some of the other schools because we have a very large gym. There are some other schools that their count determines when they get to that point where they've reached maximum capacity between our stadium and our gym. I wouldn't worry about that. That, that wouldn't be a concern for me. But I brought back the information and that was when, you know, I was told, let's do what the vast majority of other schools do to keep it consistent in that respect. And that's how it happened. Now, that was some time ago. I don't know if it's a situation where it's much different now. I mean, if you'd like, I could put it out there and find out, you know, exactly, I, I can do a couple of different things for you. If that's the route you wanted to go, I could A, find out what other districts are doing first. If you say, you know what, this is just what we want to do, I could offer for those individuals that already purchased season passes with the permission of Tia to give them some type of, you know, reimbursement to get their money back because that will be one of the things that obviously would be brought up because we have sold, I don't know how many off the top of my head, because my secretary has sold most of them.
Maybe we start this, if, if, if it interferes too much, maybe we start this next year. Maybe, maybe it's our policy going into 2022. I mean, if this becomes a problem.
I could do it now if you wanted me to do it. I mean, I could do whatever you want me to do. I could make it happen, however you.
I would suggest, again, just for the board, based on Mark's request for additional information, how about if we put this on as is with the understanding that Brian's gonna do some more research, come back and present, we can amend it next board meeting, if need be. Is that okay? I'll get everybody the information. If we get it, as soon as you, Brian gets it to me, I'll get it to you. And then we can have another conversation about what the four or five of you want to do.
And I'll follow up, Bill. I think it's a great idea because one of the things that, and I'll just take this as a little cheap commercial for, for, for me, I think it's important that we get more adult seniors into our stadiums, basketball courts, volleyball courts. Because I think the more engagement we have from our community at that level, the more respectful our students will become as well. So there's a pure benefit to have our seniors and our parents and grandparents, aunts and uncles to get, to fill up our stadiums because, like I said before, in some districts, sports is like their religion and you, you know, they, they line up to get there. And that's the kind of engagement I'd love to see revitalized.
I just, it says something about our community that.
I completely agree.
We value.
I completely agree.
Yeah, I think we don't have to worry about, like you said, running out of seats.
That, that, that wouldn't be an issue. I, I would have no concern with that.
We would love to run out of seats.
So we'll gather some more information and then we'll come back in a couple of weeks and go from there.
I, I do have one question though, because this is a really important one. Was, did the board make the decision now that we are going to, I didn't see a vote or anything, for go to both, both electronic and in person? Because if that's the case, you know, obviously I want to get on that like right away.
Is there a motion on that? I think you made the suggestion to do both.
Yes, I would suggest a motion that we offer both online purchases and at the gate purchases of tickets.
Is there support?
Support.
Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Zaria.
Okay, so I recommend the board to consider for approval, item 10.01 as amended.
Need a motion?
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Zaria.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
And Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
I'd like the board to consider for approval, items 10.02 to 10.10. Operation matters.
Is there any further discussion? She did. I didn't know if there's a discussion. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mrs. Zaria.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Is it?
No more? I'm sorry, Mr. President, that is it, yes.
I'm just waiting for the pizza to come through. Board of recommendations, CEO, you already got that done. Is there anything, any committee reports or requests of the board? Second hearing of the public. Please come to the mic, state your name.
Hi, how are you?
Hello, how are you?
Good evening. I'm a parent of two children in the elementary school. I think it's great that we do wear masks, but also a big thing is we need proper education on cross contamination. I worked in a nursing home in the beginning of COVID. They give you proper education on wearing PPE. So every child, I feel like from kindergarten to 12th grade should be educated on how to properly wear a mask in the lunchroom, in the bathroom, in the classroom. Kids like to touch stuff. Kids like to take stuff off. They wear them as blind folders. I don't know what they're doing. You know, I'm not there because I'm, you know, their teacher is right now watching over them, you know? And I'm trusting you guys to make the best decision for them and to watch over them just like I would at home. My kids are four and seven. They know, don't touch your face. It's not that hard. You gotta tell them. You shouldn't have to constantly tell them, don't touch your mask, don't touch your face. A nurse should come in and be teaching the class, okay, this is the proper way to wear your mask. You shouldn't be touching your face. We should do more hand washing than hand sanitizing, honestly. Hand sanitizer is like, why are we putting this much hand sanitizer on these kids? They can wash their hands right after lunch or right after the bathroom instead of hand sanitizing. I know, yeah, it's gonna be a time thing. Oh, it's taking up too much time. But sometimes we have to do what we have to do to keep our kids safe, right? So that's another thing. Mandating the mask, I think is a good thing, but go along with proper educating people how to wear the mask, you know what I mean? Because even me as a mom, I'm like, people hang them on their car, on their cars, on their things, their rearview mirror, and then I'm just like, what? And then you put that on to go in the store? Like, no. Like, why are we doing that? Like, for decoration? Another thing, I think it's really touchy for people to say, hey, are you vaccinated? Are you vaccinated? I don't think that's anybody's business. I think that should be private. I'm not asking what you make or how much you make or anything like that. I don't go into work and say, hey, what's your salary? Or, hey, are you vaccinated? That's a touchy subject and it should be private. And if somebody wants to put that down on paper that, hey, I'm vaccinated, that's okay, that's fine. But if they don't want to, then they shouldn't have to be forced to. And I think that that would reduce a lot of conflict with the parents and the teachers and the schools because everybody wants to have their choice. And I think that's very important. But also what's very important is keeping our kids safe. And everybody's like, oh, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, you can still get it. It's true. You can still get it. You can still spread it with, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. But having the proper education on how to wear a mask, on how to use the bathroom, make sure they're washing their hands. Like, my son came home, he's like, we didn't even wash our hands after we went to the bathroom. I'm like, but why? He's like, I just dabbed some hand sanitizer in my hand. I'm like, okay, I'm glad I gave you some. Like, you know, another thing. They're in gym and he's like, I'm wearing a mask in gym. I don't like that. You know what I mean? He's running around, he's sweating. I give them a 10-pack of masks in their bag and I'm like, if you get sweaty, if you get hot, if you drop it on the floor, change it. Do not put that mask that you dropped on the floor on your face. Tell your teacher, hey, I need to change my mask because I dropped it on the floor or, you know, and we have a lot of kids taking off their masks, putting it on a lunch table or whatever they're doing with it. No, after they're eating lunch, they should get a new mask. They should not be wearing the same mask they had on before they ate lunch. And, I don't know, I'm just like.
What was your, what was your name again?
My name is Alexis Garza. And it's just like, I wish there was more parents at this meeting and it's kind of disappointing not seeing a bunch of parents here. Because it's like, we need to be involved. We need to be giving our opinions and what, what we think. You know, and it's a lot of back and forth on what we should do and what, no, it's, I don't know if there's any health department people on here or anything like that, but cross contamination is the biggest spread of the virus. It's, it's not wearing a mask or being vaccinated or anything like that. It's cross contamination. And I just hope we can all make the best decision for our kids and we can keep, whether we're vaccinated or unvaccinated, private. And nobody should be mandated to do anything because I think that would really cause a conflict. And thank you guys for your time and if I have any more questions, I'll be back.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, guys. I have a question about the mask mandate. I'm going really back and forth on how I feel about it, but you guys already voted, so I don't know if that even matters. Does that include outside activities like the football games?
At this point, I think we were talking about the classroom, so didn't include athletes and I don't think it, I didn't, I didn't get that as.
My outside, it was inside.
Yeah, not open, open air is a whole different, it's a whole different ballgame.
Does that include the people working in the offices, secretaries and everyone?
They're in this building.
I think the exception was a teacher lecturing at the time.
Okay, so the golden Buckeye, I wanted to say that yes, you can get a golden Buckeye card if you have a disability. But to actually have one, like, I'm not saying that the person has it, belongs to. But you do actually have to like go through a process to get the golden Buckeye card. I'm not saying that that golden Buckeye card actually belonged to that person. So I understand like needing an ID to prove it. But since we talked about this and honoring our people that teach us valuable lessons, can we talk about possibly, and I don't want to mess with your revenue too much, Mr. Corey, we had great conversation about fundraisers and how to support our athletes at the game yesterday. Possibly giving a reduced card to one adult of our athletes. Just one supporter of, of an athlete. Because I know that there's been some times, I know, I know that they have a chance to, you know, earn by maybe working concessions and that kind of thing, but I know maybe it conflicts with work or I know there's times that, you know, people are counting change or not being able to come to a game to support their own children or niece or nephew or whatever it is, because they simply can't afford to. I know I have had some hard times where I've been like, oh, shoot. And I've, you know, and I've helped other people at times too. So can we possibly consider that? I think that was all that I really wanted to, to ask about unless, I just sent a note out. Are you guys ready to talk about any of that or not yet?
The note?
Yeah.
Oh, the email from earlier?
Can we talk about the softball, baseball, or are you guys not prepared to do that?
I am not prepared to do that.
Okay. You are?
Nope.
Okay.
Can we, can we talk offline later?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I remembered one more thing. All right, I'm back, because I remembered, I forgot one more thing. Maybe to try to like help reduce the spread, right? Because that's what we're trying to do. Maybe we should have all of our teachers temp testing all of our kids once they come into the classroom, not when they come in the door so much because that's like chaos, like I see it, you know, everybody coming in, trying to get their breakfast and then go to their classroom. But maybe we can do temp checks and we can also proper educate them, like I said, on how to wear their masks and stuff like that. But that's it. I mean, I really hope you guys really keep that all in mind because those are really great things for us to do and just to kind of all be on the same page as parents and teachers and just all trying to have our best interests. So thank you.
So I know this is probably not gonna sound normal, but I think in the very beginning, we were doing the whole temperature checks and I believe, didn't the health department come back and say that that wasn't very?
They're discouraged against it and for, for a lot of reasons. You come out of gym class or warmer, you come, like, it's coming from the outside, you're sitting under a vent. So it's, it's, it measures skin temperature, which is sometimes distorts what reality is. But also, especially for children, most times when they have it, they are asymptomatic. Or if they do have symptoms, it's not usually a fever. So to spend all that time doing that, we were discouraged from doing that.
Okay, I totally understand that. Now, what do you guys think about educating them on how to wear their mask?
I think that was a great suggestion. I think that was a great suggestion. And my question would be to Drew offline. Do we have video capabilities in all the classrooms around the district? Should we do something that was a display maybe that we could do? So I was gonna ask those questions, but since you asked again. I'll put on this, we'll come up, your suggestion is very well taken and very well founded and we'll figure out a way to make it make sense for us.
Kind of like on the airplane.
Yeah, kind of like that. But, you know, I think. At Longfellow, they used to do those morning updates, right? So right there in the schools, throughout the entire building. So it's not too far fetched. And everybody's got computers, everybody's got the smart boards and we got some new fancy technology now, so we'll figure. We are going to be, so, I mean, to just do a, a PS.
And they send it out to the parents, which is, I love that. We get it every morning before the kids even get it, so they could add it right there.
So we've got a full crew here to do a PSA or something like that. We can just show them the screen while, and then we can back it up with some, some conversation. It's not too far fetched. So we will take that in consideration and thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And come back again. I got a feeling you're gonna be back again. I can see you liking that podium. Thank you. Is there anything else, guys?
Hello, I'm Mary Miller, East 34th Street, on the block of Palm there. Construction started. It wasn't as bad today as I thought it might be, so we have a ways to go. It doesn't worry me as much as the in and out of Southview Middle School. So even with the barrels, we're still better off at Palm with pickup prep off. I don't know, there's so much space back there. If we can be, in the future, an outlet to get people out besides just the one lane. I know that's always an issue. So just throwing things out there to think about. My main concern, you covered it already, but I do have something today. My daughter came home and said, somebody came into their class looking for masks and they didn't have it and they tried another classroom who also didn't have it. So I'm thinking that's at least three classrooms who were unable to find a mask within a reasonable distance. Another girl broke hers and I do send my kids to with the 10-pack. I brought some here today in case anybody changes their mind on needing masks at the table because I do think, you know, indoor masking is, you know, what the CDC recommends now, even with vaccinated people. I care about all of you. Three feet of distance would have been a little better too, you know, however that works, but we need to lead by example as well for if we expect our kids to wear them. And the vaccine is waiting, is that a word? I don't know. But it's not as effective, so maybe we need to think about, because teachers and staff were amongst the first to get vaccinated, that there are times coming up for the boosters, so maybe you want to include those to get those numbers higher for Mr. Cavell to bring a clinic here. Do we have masks for the buildings? Okay.
We do have.
Okay.
We do have some in the warehouse that we, as a matter of fact, as you were saying that, I am texting my associate director to make sure that we order some more.
Okay, and I know the start of school, maybe we needed to distribute more. People forgot them or, you know, maybe they're just somewhere not available, but I think we definitely do have them available. Sorry if I'm a little muffled. I would have took my mask off, but it was like, nobody's wearing one here. So I'm like, I'm super protected, wearing my M95 today. Because I do wonder and worry if my vaccine's starting to wear off. I got the Pfizer, it's not as effective with the Delta variant. So just things that I consider, my risk factor mitigation here, so. that I consider, um, my risk factor mitigation here, so, um, there is one more thing that I wanted to bring up, and, um, huh, slipped my mind. Um, oh, water bottles. Some schools allow them, some schools don't. Um, our middle school did. Uh, a friend of mine's daughter goes to another middle school who doesn't, and she was worried about her child using the water fountain with other children. So, I don't know if that's just a, um, personal teacher decision, a principal decision, or what. Um, I know they can get messy in the classrooms, I know we want to protect the equipment, um, but maybe.
Oh, I understand, I'm sorry. I thought you said we weren't letting them use the, the fountain to fill water bottles. You're saying some teachers don't allow water bottles in the class. Gotcha, okay, okay.
Um, hmm, I guess that's it.
Thanks, Mary.
Yes, so, thank you. Uh, Tim, if I don't get a chance, you will be missed. Um, I hope whoever comes in takes your seat, asks the questions, um, holds people to account. Ms. Johnson, too, I don't know if she's still around. Um, thank you for her service, and, um, I hope I don't have to come back. I'll come in, come back another time, you know, for now, because, um, I try to ask the questions, but, um, I don't want to be combative ever again, so, um, I think we're on the right track and, um, thank you all for, you know, continuing to care, really. And I think that's the best we can do, is just show each other we care and, um, get through what we can get through the best way we can, so, thank you.
And I'll say to you, Mary, I know you've been part of the, uh, part of the, the battle for our community for a long time and our students, and, um, this is probably not even part of my agenda anywhere, but we are going down to Columbus on tomorrow to.
Oh, great.
To finish those things and then finish our discussion with the people down there.
Good, okay.
About, yes, getting ourselves back on track.
Good.
Thursday.
Thursday, I'm sorry, I'm a day early.
He's, he's getting early now.
I'm sorry. My car's warming up now, I'm ready to go. Yeah, it's been a long few years.
All right.
But I thought you'd like to know that.
Thank you, yes, I did.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for bringing that up.
Yep, thank you.
I do want to say Admiral King does, as the kids are coming out of the car, they have a basket of masks outside. If they don't have a mask on, they're, the teachers that are outside getting, like, helping the kids get out of the car, if they don't have a mask, they hand them one. So, they are using those masks that are in the warehouse.
I'm gonna reclaim my time.
Reclaiming your time, right.
Um, this, this one's a little hard for me because, uh, I, I tried not to be so combative anymore either, um, but, uh, there is something I want to address, and I really haven't, uh, spoken to any of you about it, but I am concerned about, um, uh, Ms. Johnson. Um, I, I know it's a sore subject, but, um, she, she, she's not, she's not here, and, um, you guys take some votes. I, I'm loving the, the conversation that's, that's been had, uh, open on the floor, I appreciate that, but, um, I don't know a, all, you know, what's going on, but, um, and I know it's a sore spot for me because I am running for board, um, but I, I don't think it's fair, uh, to the public, to the, the Titan families, um, for her boys and her vote to be missing. Um, so I'm asking you guys as a board, uh, to please, um, do whatever you guys have to do to, uh, to figure that out. It's, it's been several months, um, that she's not been here. Uh, I, I, I love, uh, I enjoy her as a person. Also, it's not a personal attack, but business-wise, um, you know, we, we have fought for local control, and we want our voice and our vote, um, to matter, and I, I think it's important for the people that we elected to be here, uh, to vote.
Anything else from the public?
Okay, so, um, now, like, the vaccination clinic is just like rumbling in my head, and it's just like, hmm, that sounds like a good idea, but then it's like, make sure that when you are addressing that there's going to be a vaccination clinic, that there is a clear message out there that it is optional, it's not something that's mandatory or mandated because parents are gonna lose it. And I don't, I don't want to see that, because I don't want to have to take my own children out of school because of what somebody else chooses for my children or me, um, because I'm not gonna say whether I'm vaccinated or I'm not. I'm not for it, I'm not against it, but I think everybody should have their own, um, personal, you know, it should be their own, their own, you know, it shouldn't be, you know, you shouldn't be telling Mr. Hoffman, right, hey, I'm vaccinated, oh, I'm not vaccinated. It just shouldn't be, just to eliminate conflict between teachers, parents, and students, because then you're gonna get students telling other students, hey, you're not vaccinated? I don't want to hang out with you. And then how is that student gonna feel going home, knowing that that person doesn't want to be there for them? That's not okay. And that's all.
Give the chair.
Uh, yeah, anybody?
If I could, just because I don't want to be misunderstood, um, when we say about identifying vaccination, it is not for public use. So, there's information that we, we collect that is private. We have, there's, we have all kinds of information on employees that we don't disclose to the public, so by no means are we suggesting that we're telling everybody who's vaccinated. Secondly, um, the reality is, TB tests, um, our kids, our students have to be vaccinated to come to school. So, this is not new territory.
It's not new, but this vaccine is new.
But we're not, and so, again, so we've never suggested mandating vaccinations.
And I'm not saying.
Right, but I, again, but the conversation, I don't want people to think that that was part of our dialogue.
That's exactly what I'm saying, because I don't want other parents.
So, so just for the record, we've not suggested that anyone is mandating vaccinations, nor have we suggested that we're making public disclosure of anybody's medical information. So, that's what I just want to be clear about.
No, and I know that. That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at, for it to be clear to the parents and to people that this is not a mandate. It's just an opportunity for people to come, if they want to get vaccinated, hey, there's an opportunity for you to come get vaccinated.
How many vaccination clinics have we had?
14.
14. We've had 14 vaccination clinics in this district.
And that's great. If they choose to vaccinate their children, that's great, but like I said, other parents, once they hear that, oh, there's a vaccination clinic in the school, they might think that it's mandated or that it's something that they have to be concerned about. Giving that other person the, you know, relief that, oh, it's not mandatory is good, because then they don't feel like they have to snatch their kid out of school, because it's their choice whether they want to vaccinate their kid or not on a new vaccine that has just came out. And I have known people personally that have gotten the vaccine and have been sick afterwards and have very, very bad reactions to it, and then I know people who have got it and been completely fine. So, everybody's different, and that's all I'm getting at, and that everything is just pretty much clear, and there's no miscommunication, you know? Because I felt like I was miscommunicating, you were miscommunicating me, um, when I said, I need things to be clear to the parents, you know that there's a vaccination clinic coming, but it's not mandatory for your kids, it's an option for you. Because pediatricians are already suggesting that kids 12 and older get their shot, right? But it's up to the parent. That's all.
And so, you're clear, we are recommending that everyone who is eligible to get a vaccination gets one. That's no, there's no pulling no punches on that, I don't want it to be, we're thinking